For the supper.
I'll try and keep the pace moving here, but again, let me ask you a question. Page nine, there's not much here. A couple of things that aren't in the budget that will get tweaked for November is 2021 on, under our 272012 rec admin, we'll put in costs for summer games for that year, what we anticipate the deficit on summer games to be, and we can debate that for 2021 later. We'll get that in there, and then we have campground contract and campground maintenance. We expect some increases on both of those with the additional sites, but we'll get that figured out too. And then I just wanted to point out, down in 272022, our parks material, we added $10,000 for Ball Diamond and CES as a capital contribution to do that. Now, I've talked to Dennis Baker about that project and also the whole Lions Park, Baseball Diamond, the whole thing. So he's supposed to be giving a time with Peter to meet on the contract and all that specifically, but I don't have that yet, so I'll wait and hear from him. I know you want to be involved there.
Okay, so Mayor, I can't, so, sorry, I was trying to find out where we were. So you talked to them in regards to...
So I talked to Dennis, and we had a chat about CES, retrofit of the Ball Diamond, the Lions Park contract coming up, baseball field, the expectations of the baseball field, and we had kind of a good chat about all that. So he's going to get ahold of me when he can pin Peter down, and we can get in a room and discuss all this.
Okay, thank you.
So we plunked a number in there as far as the contribution to retrofit that Ball Diamond, but I don't know what that looks like just yet. Page 10, these are all pretty minor, the only, the big thing on here, now, this is, this is part of a much bigger discussion. It's down near the bottom of page 10, and it is a new account, 272707, and it's the golf course loan payments. And so what we put in is a specific GL for the line of credit payments that we started last year, but also, when we get to the capital budget, we look at hole 16, it is currently funded by the venture. And I'm not suggesting actually that's where it should land, that's just where it currently is. And so we put in what the loan payment on that would be. And 20 years on that might not even be a responsible term for the loan, and we'll have that discussion as we get closer. But we just wanted to make sure we accounted for it somewhere, that if we were going to fund it by the venture, we needed to account for a payment somewhere.
Jeff, can we back up to 72602?
Yep.
Who is doing the party in the part and forth now?
Well, the last few years, the Remington Museum has been taking that on.
And so we are contributing $5,000 towards that.
We fund most of it, so, yeah. But they take care of hosting and logistics and staffing and everything like that. And from what I understand, it seems to be going quite well.
Yes.
So just so you know, that's where those new numbers under that 272707. We'll have more discussion about how to fund that later, but it's there now. Otherwise, I just, on page 11, what am I looking at here? I have some notes, one second here. 11 is really at the bottom half, is getting into our electrical revenues, electrical operating. We did some reallocation in the general operating, there isn't new money there, it's just reallocating. Leonard wants to focus on a bunch more meter repairs and recalls and audits next year, so we moved some money around, but it wasn't more money. And then other than that, that's about all I had substance on page 11, unless there's any questions on what would be golf beautification and, and, I'll see it in a second. Okay.
Page 12.
Page 12, the really, the big piece there is the solar farm loan payments. So that's 292999, or sorry, 292830, that's another new account, because that one will be with us for 15 years, so we figured we'd make an account out of it. And so that's where that landed. And then we have some transfers to reserves. These are, so what it is, is we're taxing for these and then putting them in reserves for future projects, okay, so that's what that is. They're pretty consistent. This year, we had some money for server upgrades in 2021, we're observing some of these this year.
I just need clarification, the solar farm repayment, that's coming out of the revenue generated.
Essentially washing with the revenue.
It's a zero.
There, there's actually a tiny bit of buffer on the revenue side, just based on the projections, but it's really, really close, it's within a thousand dollars. So that's intended to be a wash, and then we get into the capital. Now, I'd actually like to discuss, and again, if there's any questions on operational, let's talk about it, but I'd like to discuss capital using this other sheet, this eight and a half by 14. It's a little easier way to discuss the capital piece. So the first page, and really all we need to focus on for tonight in 2020, it's obviously the biggest one too. This lays out everything that we currently have planned to spend, it's capital, and how it's funded. Now, one of the issues with this is when you get to the very last column of other, some of that means that we have other grants coming in, and some of it means we got to figure it out, frankly. But I want to point out a couple of things, and I know it's not, it's a long form, it's not the easiest to follow, but if you look at the very top two lines, estimated funding to be carried forward to 2020, we have 150,000 of unused MSI from previous years that is rolling forward into 2020 to, that we can use, is at your disposal.
How much did you say?
And we anticipate using $684,000 worth of MSI in 2020.
So how much of the total does it represent?
So what that will do is leave us with $75,000 at the end of the year. So if we are reduced 15%, we're projecting to use 75,000 of our carry forward, leaving us with 75,000. Having said that, we have a lot of capital to still fund, so we need to talk about that a bit. And then the next column over is federal gas tax fund. We have $220,000 coming forward on federal gas tax fund.
220.
Yeah, and again, Mayor, it's those bold lines at the very top of your page there.
Yeah, I see that.
And then we're anticipating spending 193. Now, the reason we have 220 is that in 2019, we got double our federal gas tax fund.
That's right, but we don't know what happens next.
Right, but I don't know what it looks like next year. And sometimes we, they do that, they double up the year because it means there's one going to be much less. But federal gas tax fund is a legislated fund where municipalities get a percentage of the federal gas tax. And so it's pretty consistent, because consumer spending stays reasonably consistent. So that one doesn't worry me too much, but we have some federal gas tax fund at our disposal. But it is, federal gas tax fund is not as, what's the word? The options for what you can use it for are much more limited than MSI.
It's not as flexible.
So federal gas tax fund is utility in roads, that's really the extent of what you can use that for. And MSI has a little more liberty in what you can use it for. But I just wanted to point those two things out. If you go across the top after federal gas tax fund, you can see that many of the accounts or the projects are funded with reserve funding, that's the next column, then just simply tax funded. And then we have these water, sewer, garbage, self-funded categories, which means there are excess revenue in those utilities that can fund capital, electrical's there as well, sorry, and then other. And I'll explain the other on some of those categories, because some of them are anticipated sources that just aren't one of those grants. And in the case of the golf course, for example, right now, it's the venture, it's borrowing, which I'm not sure that's where we want to land, but it's where we got it for now, to try and fund it. So as far as the projects go, I'll just pick a couple, some of them are pretty minor, like the server upgrade, antenna upgrade, security cameras, they're pretty small, but the Nitzitapi Monument, we have 84.5. And we have 65 of that as other, because we're anticipating, we've applied for a number of other grants now on that project, so that's some of that other funding. It's not MSI, it's not gas tax, but it's other.
Who's pushing that forward now? Karen's not here anymore.
Well, that's a good question. It's kind of Jeff. Is who's seen me going, Karen emails me occasionally, and I've asked her to, in fact, she volunteered last time, she emailed me to get ahold of Ramona Bighead and remind her that they were going to work with Blood Tribe Chief of Council and a number of the band members to raise funds. So I'm hoping that's going forward, and then I've touched base with school administration to see if there's an appetite from the school point of view to keep that going.
Which I was so excited about at one point.
Yeah, so I'm hopeful that that's there, but Hocken and I did a couple grant applications recently for it. And so that's what the 65,000 in other is, is if those come through. I think we have about 10,000 in that number, hopefully from Chief of Council and the community, in other donations, so.
So if the $65,000 doesn't come through, then it's going to be 84.5.
Yeah, and so we need, you need to have that discussion at the time to say, well, we're not comfortable there, and it's going to go to another year. You know, we're going to move it to the year after, and we're going to continue to try and fundraise. You know, again, all this stuff can be manipulated depending on how it comes around in a year, but I wouldn't suggest that the town should be on a hook for 84.5 and so on. That wasn't the intent.
No, no.
The school division should have some money in this, the Blood Tribe, county, the town, and some grant associations. Really, when we started this council, you'll recall, the intent of the town was, we were going to be the one to put up the rent and maintain it perpetually. That was our scheme. And right now, we're sitting at 19,500 tax money to make up the difference, and that might not be acceptable either, and that's totally fine. That's just how we have it plugged for now.
Mayor, I was just going to make a comment. If we don't get any kind of interest from all those other organizations, then we just, I guess we nix it, we don't do it, right?
Yeah, we'll have to have that discussion, but it's one of those, what I would call a contingent expense, that until we hit a hurdle of income, we don't spend it.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe I'm looking at this in a, in a different light, perhaps?
Like reconciliation?
We just talked earlier with South Row about, we need to have something that will get people to stop. This might be one of those items that will actually get people to stop there. May not be a ton of people, but it might be some if we, you know, make it right.
Yeah, and I mean, it's intended to be a nice monument with a nice place to rest, right?
There are a number of tourists that pass through our border that have a huge interest in native culture.
I'm shocked at how many indigenous travelers pass through our community.
The Germans eat this stuff, huh?
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that, you know, there's, there's another spin to this besides the fact that we want to recognize the event.
I was just trying to be aware of the reconciliation aspect of things that we don't want to move forward without their approval, without their consultation and all that kind of stuff, correct? Because if we don't do it the way that they feel is appropriate, they're not going to be happy.
Well, that's the whole intent.
There's consulting over for the projects.
It's not going to be done by the town, that's for sure not.
We want to have that discussion, consultation, for sure.
Another, as part of the project, always was part of the project.
I have a question on a different one. So 232762, sweeper replacement. So Counselor Silk had brought up the fact that, you know, what if we went in with another town? So is that 250,000, are we splitting it? Because I like it better that way.
I would understand that. I've reached out to Wade, and I've asked him to let me know when we can discuss what that might look like. And we've talked about two models. One is splitting capital costs and working out how we share that. Or the other is that potentially we buy it and they have a rate for usage. So if they're not prepared to come up with, you know, and I don't think it's even fair to say we'd split it 50/50, I mean, just look at the kilometers of roads in each town, it's not the same.
So are you talking McGrath and the uptown?
Yeah, so I've reached out, Wade and I are going to work through that a bit, but I said, entertain two models. One is, we buy it and give you a rate, and you don't buy it, but you can come and use it at X dollars an hour, or we split the capital.
Counselor Silk, go ahead.
You and me, I also sort of, Counselor Crowe was there, kind of reached out to Mayor a few from Raymond saying, you know, we shouldn't possibly look at doing this for the three communities, or we start talking turkey about things that we can share, because we know this money's good.
Totally, I agree. Yeah, I think it's a very good point.
So that will amend before it's done, I'm sure, but Wade and I...
We need to become creative in a time of less than plenty. Counselor Ben-Gree?
Oh, sorry.
Jeff, 272027.
That's the campground expansion.
No, a resurface of the tennis courts and that basketball court.
Where are you?
He says 230, that was...
Resurfacing tennis courts.
272027.
It was a bunch under the account, right?
Okay, I see, I see.
And that's park capital.
Now, is that a goal? And the reason why I ask is, is what's happening with the spray park?
Great question. So a couple things, let me, let me take one step back, Counselor, if I might, on the whole parks and rec stuff, and I'll come back to that. One thing I don't have in this budget, well, no, one thing we do have is this follows the rec master plan priorities, but I don't have a position from the committee on those specifically. So I've asked Randy, next time you meet, I like recommendations on everything to make sure that's still what the community considers priority. So we just, we simply took the next chunk, 250,000 worth of the rec master plan. To your question, we've been having some good debate about that very thing in the office about resurfacing that tennis court is one thing. Is it at a point it needs more than that? Is it at a point that it needs new cement so trees quit growing through it and it's, you know, it's doing a little better? If we get to that point, then do we move the location of it? And then does that open up something potentially for spray park if it doesn't go to Lions Park? There's just a bunch of things being juggled in the air here, and I'm not sure how any of them are going.
I love to know whether it costs water to move that tennis court. Right. Beautiful courts up there.
Counselor.
What I was going to make, they've actually divided into two courts, they put the basketball right inside there, the big guy chaining, yes, that's a, a nice look.
A nice look, yes.
Counselor Silk.
Jeff, part of this conversation certainly needs to include Westland School Division, because we've conceptually thought about the land across from the high school, and maybe the tennis courts are their, maybe their partner, and maybe they're helping to pay for that, the tennis courts there. They want green space, and then they got to participate.
You know, there is something that I found out from the Rotarian, that the big organization of the Rotarian seemed to go away now from projects like parks and stuff like that, because of the cost that is incurred by municipalities after reform maintenance, that realizes creating a burden on municipalities. So I found that interesting. So they're, they're going away from those type of projects, so, yes?
I mean, that is interesting, and it's gracious on the part of the Rotarians, but I think we...
No, it's a big umbrella of the Rotarian. In our town, we're still...
We appreciate the park, hitting Lions Park.
It wouldn't have happened without them.
So, I mean, we willingly accept those costs, knowing that it's for the benefit of our communities.
Exactly right.
I'm hoping the Rotarians here aren't thinking the same.
Like water slides at the swimming pool, that was a lot of grant writing in the Rotarian.
I mean, they've done so much for our town, I find it interesting that there is a switch, there's a switch in focus from the general organization.
So as far as the parts and rec items, we'll get a little more feedback from the Parts and Rec Committee. The other part that we've done is Anthony, who's our custodian here, he has some experience in grant writing, and he started last week writing grants for everything in the budget under the Parks and Rec Committee.
Oh, wow.
So he has a past life raising as fundraising.
Really?
Yep, so he's been working up a lot of day on grant application, which is awesome. Yeah, he's been doing great work on it.
Counselor Brown?
Okay, so I just have a question on this. It is same area, it is 27277, so it's the formats for the ice arena. So $60,000, so it's my understanding we have that $45,000 in reserves already.
Correct.
Okay, so, and I thought we were looking at getting a grant, we got turned down last year or something, was my understanding, but...
That's actually the last one that Anthony's just, he's writing it right now, with Alberta Recycling and Recycled Rubber Grants, it's a $30,000 demonstration grant, it's called. The other part of that is, I really do think we, we've heard from ice skating and from hockey that they're going to step up and put some money towards us too, and I think we need to push that and make sure that they do, right? And so that's another thing, I'm hoping that the reserves amount of that goes down, and that we have these other sources. So I do know the one Anthony's writing right now is for 30 grand. And we're hopeful that can come through, so.
Well, how did you find out that we have such a German almost?
You know, we, we knew all this about him when we hired him. We've just been looking for ways to use those skills too.
Perfect, wonderful.
Backings with one man and writes grants with the other?
A couple hours here and a couple hours there, yeah, yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, no, he's, he's fantastic guy.
And the new tops in the ladies' bathroom are fabulous.
Yes, isn't it?
Take my word.
After hours.
Counselor Ben-Gree?
Jeff, going up the list, about the middle of the list, 242762.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch there.
That laneway, what are you doing with that?
Let me get my head around it here, Counselor, so...
Third and Fourth Street.
Right here.
Oh, that is, that is where Mrs...
Behind the post office.
Is that where that is?
East.
No, this is east.
No, 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 no.
I have to ask Brandon on that one, actually, Counselor.
Where Sigrid lives.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She's on Second Street.
No, she's on Third.
No, she's on Third.
She's on Third Street, between Third and Fourth, yeah.
Yeah, I have to ask them on that one.
There is a laneway. That is a laneway, I'm pretty sure, I think that is a lane.
Because it's sewer self-funded, my guess is there's a sanitary main there that they are placing.
Yeah.
I know up in that area, there's a couple of them that threw problems this year, they had camera and found they're full of roots.
Yeah.
So they're old clay tile lions that are chock full of roots now. I don't want to say this is one of them, but it might be, but I will, I'll have a better explanation on that one for you, Counselor.
It seems like Bart and Curtis have been up on these till the camera a lot.
Yeah.
Somebody up there today, I saw them up there.
Yes, they were there last week too.
Oh, they were there again today, so.
Okay, so there must be a problem down there.
Yeah, so I know they're working with a few things there, and Bart has told me they're running some root problems in a few areas of town.
And we're still going to develop the storm drainage on the Ninth Street and Third Avenue?
Well, this one we need to, so we're going to have to, Brandon and I, and Bart, I have to have a little more discussion on this. There's always this question of when do you trigger building that thing? So now with Third Avenue, and then particularly, we're looking at with Mike Schaefer's, if he goes through with the subdivision, that's probably our trigger.
Yeah, because now the water is going to be running crazy.
It's coming right from 12th straight down, it's not going over a field anymore and soaking in, it's a straight shot, and so we may necessitate that now. So we have it, and that's not the whole cost by any means, but it would start some of the catchment for it. Yeah, but we're having a little more discussion on that one still too.
If I notice, he's put a ditch in a couple of culverts down there, Mike has.
So we're starting to think it's going to be getting time on that.
And can I ask something regarding the funding? I mean, I see right now you have it of an MSI, but if it benefits the whole area and new development comes in, is there going to be an offset levy?
So the current offset levy considers that storm pond, and so we may not have it pre-construction, but over time, we should recover some of those costs.
Okay.
Yeah, so Mike would be subject to the offset levy upon subdivision. He's on eight acres, so 40 some thousand dollars would be his levy, and it considers that storm pond.
Okay, thanks, just wanted to know.
Is that an optimal place to put it, or should it be across 12th Street to the west?
So...
The reserve lands specially for that at that point?
Well, so we, we think it's the right place, at least, that, that was purchased by the town when Marion was still here, I don't remember all the engineering into it.
We purchased about three lots, doesn't that land kind of flow towards the east though?
It's a natural, no, that's the natural catchment for it, because we have a culvert right next to Kendoy, that catches all the natural runoff and puts it into our storm system. The problem is it overwhelms our storm system in high rains, so we need to catch it and hold it for a day or two, and then release it into the storm system. So that's the intent of that pond, is it would work like that. And it's intended to be a wet pond, so it would be landscaped as a pond, you see it in the cities a lot, you see it in ponds.
Built on the ground.
Yeah, so it would be a wet pond with an over, I think we call it overboard, in the storm times.
So right there by the Jesses, I was talking.
Yeah, by Kendoy's, Lynn Jesses.
Yeah, there's about three lots that the town purchased, seven years ago, so, yeah.
Yeah, if you make it green space and somebody put a little walking trail around it or something like that, ultimately, it could build out there. I didn't really have any specific capital, I just wanted to touch on down at the bottom, and again, we, we have to have more conversation about this, but at CCW, I'll have a departmental kind of budget financial statement for you on the golf course. You remember that we had recommendations from Miles on what the important equipment was, and we plugged it in for now, but it's all the venture funded, and I'm not convinced that's the best way to fund it. I don't think we can borrow for everything out there over the next few years. Like, we gotta, we can still do some, because that's what we set the line of credit up for, but we got to plateau at some point, and we got to, we got to be careful, and if we get too far into it, we know there's not really going to be extensive revenue proceeds to pay off debt, we'll just have to tax to pay off debt. And that's okay within reason, but we just got to be careful. So we're going to continue to work on funding sources on some of those. One of the thoughts that I had, although I know it's probably not particularly popular, and that's okay, is we seem to have a very energetic group to raise funds for a clubhouse, which is awesome. Would that group look at also maybe first, or maybe second, looking at raising funds for hole 16? You know, is that a reasonable expectation, say, which, which one do we need first? And do we focus our fundraising there first? And then see, I don't know, because you're not going to raise that kind of funding by next June, you know, you're just not.
They're meeting on the 30th, correct? I guess you could draw that out there.
Right, right, the potential associations hosting that.
I would say probably not, that's more glamorous, type of clubhouse.
No question, yeah, no question.
But the thing is, would a repaired hole attract more people, or would the clubhouse attract people regardless of how badly the house has been, the hole has been damaged?
Play one plays.
Took a counselor from neighboring town up to see the golf course. He looked over the golf course and said, this is wonderful, idiotic clubhouse, and we walked away. And they own, they own their golf course there.
And I'm not suggesting that would be the higher priority, but I wonder if we, I don't, I don't know how long we can leave 16 as it is, and it's really hard to raise funds for something that's already done, so it's not reasonable to do it and then say, hey, after the clubhouse, we'll start a fundraiser campaign to pay the adventure, because your community says it's already done.
Now, Jeff, you were saying that possibly, there is possibly a certain amount of work that could be done in-house.
Oh, yeah, right, we talked about this at the planning session, so Alex got ahold of Les Ferber's group, and they had quoted, the 280 was a turnkey construction by their firm. And so we were supposed to have it by tonight, we didn't get it yet. They are going to go through all the work and part out all the areas that they'd be comfortable with us doing in-house, and then give us an idea what the difference is in costs and how much that will reduce the overall cost. So we will know that soon, in fact, we were supposed to have it yesterday, but I haven't seen it yet. So hopefully, we see a reasonable reduction in what we could do internally with that project. So we'll keep it on the books for 2020, but it may not make it, frankly. Except, here's the kicker, we funded it by the venture, if you just take it out of the budget, we simply don't do the loan, and it didn't change the budget, because we funded it by the loan.
No, exactly.
It didn't reduce anything.
But the debt increases.
But you're not taking on debt, you wouldn't be, so we'll look at that a lot closer. Mayor?
Jeff, this is an absolutely off-the-cuff question, and Counselor Silk and Counselor Brown, could it be a reality you could have a recreation center and clubhouse combination there?
Do you want to talk about it? Do you want me to talk about it?
Go for it.
That's a, that's a great idea. The problem, though, is that there isn't enough space. You'd have, basically, you'd have to get rid of the driving range, and when you start getting too many things happening in that building, then it... getting too many things happening in that building, then it just.
It's a noise level.
It might use the water, so, yeah.
One of the other discussions, counselor, on that, the meeting I went to was, when you look at standing door-like facility, the location is important for accessibility, particularly for youth, right, so if it's central, it's a little easier accessible than if my kids gotta ride the bike to a golf course, which can be, you know, it's not, it doesn't keep them, it's a little bit different. But I'm.
There wasn't space issue. I'm looking at the expansion of our community, is in that southwest corner.
Really, it just boiled down to that very thing, of area, we just don't have the area in which to put it there, and we don't wanna take away the driving range, 'cause that is busy all the time, and so the footprint that we looked at as the committee, it just, just didn't make sense with where to put it in, into the hill, and it just, it just wasn't reasonable.
The other piece up there is parking is already a little, it's not tight, but there's not excess parking for golfing, if you needed to have parking for another hundred people because the rec center was there too, now you got a bit of a problem.
Okay, all right, we're good.
And then the neighbors complaining because of all the traffic.
Yeah, exactly, might be another one.
So I know I didn't hit on everything, but that's just a quick overview on the capital of its plan, I fully anticipate this is gonna move around, so a couple of things I just wanna mention, if you look, if you go back to this eleven-by-seventeen, and you go to the last page, what you will see is a six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-dollar deficit in the budget of expenses over revenue, and I said this at the beginning, I don't want anyone to hit the panic button about that, because we have some options, and we need to look at how we're allocating funding, so for example, we have two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar worth of federal gas tax funds that we aren't using, and we could use some of that. The other example is, in this budget, we have put in a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar to go into major utility capital reserves, but that's completely at your discretion, that amount. It's been what we've been able to do over the last few years, it's our average, but if it doesn't work in this budget, it just doesn't work in this budget, simple as that. And so that's something that would come right off the bottom line, just like that. I don't necessarily recommend that, by the way, but I think it's important, we continue to strive to reserve for that future sewer plant, that future water plant, and we've been doing a really good job of it over the last four years, five years now. But just as an example, that's, that's a big chunk that's completely at your discretion and is fully tax-funded, so to, to reduce that a little bit and massage that will, will have an impact on the budget.
Takes half a bit of weight, doesn't it?
Well, it takes a good chunk, can you believe? And, um, so we'll continue to get the actuals massaged a little bit, like I said, at CCW, I wanna talk to you about specifically the electrical department, water, sewer, golf, as, as individual silos within the budget and their impact on the budget, because I think it's important we look at that a little bit when we talk about, we have to redo our transmission bylaw at the end of the year for electrical, we need to look at our rates, all those things, right? So tonight, what I was hoping is that you have a fairly good feel for what's in it, and then we start to talk about the priorities, and we start to see where this can, how this can go, and we'll continue to look for funding as this goes forward as well.
Jeff, thank you very much. Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, right at the bottom, their light capital.
Yep.
So what's the, um, machine labor, the two-twenty-five each year there for three years, what's that?
So when we have.
That's upgrades, I see.
When we have our guys calculate their capital, there's a materials component and machinery and labor, and electrical, this is the first year we started breaking that out, what we've always done with electrical is they've just, we've, we've simply left their labor and their labor budget, we didn't budget it, assign the capital, and this year we are. It's a more appropriate way to book it, because that capital takes manpower.
Yeah, I mean, it takes.
So this is something that's on a yearly basis, it's costs, it's that every year anyways.
Yeah, it has, we just, we haven't allocated it to capital and budget.
So this isn't news now?
It's not new month.
No, it's transparent, it's transparent accounting, that's about what it is.
That's just what they need to continue to do their thing, by the way, the twenty-five KV conversion should be done next year.
That would be a nice, nice thing.
So that's a good thing, so we can get rid of that transformer at Powerhouse, it'll obviously name, because of that. And for those of you who weren't on the last, well, actually, the back one, you're like, again, you can't buy that transformer anymore, and the risk was if it, if it went down.
Yeah, we had to go find it.
Three quarters of the time.
We had to go see, I think Fortis had one of the sites somewhere.
I thought My Cloud, they had one, a hundred thousand dollars.
It was bizarre, so we've been trying to reduce the, our reliance on that transformer, and Leonard thinks that next year, they may be able to decommission it and remove it.
So here's another one, one we were supposed to buy one, a used one or something, it was, in those days, about a hundred thousand dollar, is there a market value for the thing for towns that are still relying on such a dinosaur?
But we didn't buy it, we didn't have a backup.
Okay.
We simply knew where we could acquire one.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
So that's, is Fortis interested in such a thing, no?
Well, this, this thing's life is.
Caput is done, okay, so.
We'll reclaim the oil in it, clean the PCB, and then it will.
Yeah, so it's residual or nothing?
It's, it's the original.
Okay, well, it served us well, and we didn't have too many blackouts, so that's good.
Yeah. Any question, I know there's probably millions of questions, but anything you want to make sure that I address before our next discussion on this?
Counselor Bangu.
This, yeah.
Or can we give it?
Oh, you're.
Okay. When, when I look at this budget, and I look at our, our strategic planning.
Yeah.
And I look at the priorities that have been completed.
Yeah.
And the ones that's been added on to it, it scares the literal you-know-what out of me. The reason why is because we have a deficit here, and we start adding on some of these council priorities, which is a lot of recreation, we're gonna have a hell of a big deficit, and that scares me to no end.
Oh, one thing, you reminded me of something I should've mentioned, I forgot to mention, I don't know why I forgot it, sorry. So we did not, like I said, put a indoor rec facility in the budget, 'cause that would upset the whole thing without funding in an incredible seven-figure way, but one thing we did, um, on page nine, under Tourism and Economic Special Projects, we've added, for example, ten thousand dollars for thorough exploration and potential preliminary design so that we can go to the public on it, so that's the incremental step in budgeting for it, but not the three-million-dollar standard one. It's a ten-thousand-dollar one, and to your point, counselor, I tried to go through all the council priorities, I went through every resolution from the planning session, and some aren't fully developed in here, but they're all, will be acknowledged in the budget, and then you're gonna have to have that debate.
And counselor, it's exactly why we're here, and we will use wisdom, we will use the, um, reality check that we are in a time of no plenty, and from the top down, it will have to come down, and we will have to figure out over five years what it looks like. We're not going to do all that in one year, it won't happen, we know that.
But at the same time, we're going to be hearing our budget in like two days, so we're gonna know more of what we're even considering and talking about, this could all just, a lot of this might have to be tabled, we need to know financially where we're at.
Exactly right.
If MSI doesn't change, you just found a hundred and twenty.
We, we don't have the economic reality from the province right now, so let's not be fearful, let's look at it with open eyes and say to ourselves, we will make rational decisions for our citizens. We know that money is limited, everybody's money is limited, and income is limited, and our budget has to reflect some desires to make changes, but also what we can afford.
We also need to remember that just because the provincial government drops a budget, that that can't be changed, and the governments lately have had a fantastic program of, a month into the, into their budget, oh, they have to drop this program, drop that program, so I think that's a reality, that we have to be flexible enough in our budgets.
Well, counselor, and to this time, we, we hopefully have AUMAs that has drilled into those governments who plan to understand that we are planning for three, four, and five years, and that they need to give us a stance of what's stability in a funding over three, four, five years. They understood that, hopefully, in two years' time, in two days' time, we'll have a sense of what that would look like, and we can only hope for the best in the worst of times. All right? So at this point, we have completed that budget, Jeff, thank you, and please thank your finance department for all that work, that's huge, to have to plan five years' budget, it's incredible. So thank you so much, and I know that in times, by the end of December, we will have a balanced budget, because that's what's mandated of us to do.
No, we don't have a choice.
Sorry, in other words, we have two months to figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, probably more like a month and a half, truly, but we will do it. All right, so at this point, we are going to go to the committee reports.
You have your seven A in there?
Ah, yes, I don't have my, seven A, yeah.
That's letter to Blood Tribe Department.
Yes, there is a letter there, uh, that comes out, thank you, that comes out of that, um, meeting that we had, and we need to have, Counselor Silk.
Move to approve the letter as crafted to the Blood Tribe Department.
All right, so the only thing that we would ask you is a little bit of flexibility, we will pass it by Kevin, just to make sure that we have not omitted something of importance in that letter, so if it was, would you be okay that we receive an email from Jeff and just reply, "Okay"? All right, so thank you.
Do you vote for them?
Yeah, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so let's go on the, where, am I missing something? Where is the delegation?
Oh, I didn't have this, I have the delegation, sorry, that's my mistake.
Okay, so we're going to do it now, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So business arising, uh, Mrs. Sheen has definitely an interesting issue, but what I can see the problem is because of the changes that has been made to the land by adding those utilities. The town, you, added the utilities probably because there was a need in those days, but I'm not so hundred percent sure, Jeff, what the story behind it was. It was because of the parcel of land possibly across that property that had.
If I recall, the water in the sewer went in long before the mail-in proposal came on the one east of the soccer park, those were in earlier?
Yeah.
It was the power, three-phase power that went in as a result of that initial mail-in proposal, so I can't speak for the genesis of the water in sewer, I just don't recall, and I'm trying to decide if the soccer park put it into that, I'm not sure that it did, there's always been an intention to try and get sewer towards home seekers in Honeymoon because they're still on the subject, so that's always been a bit of an initiative to work it as a good sense, but, you know.
On the other side.
Why?
But I can't think of why that was extended through, unless it's looping in from Fifth Avenue.
I do have a question, so that, in the picture that we were sent, there was the Sheen property, and then there was the property.
To the east.
To the east, and I, that's Stewart's.
No, it's mailing.
Property immediately to the east is made as Jack.
Okay, so did Jack Malin get a bill?
Yeah, the same.
The same?
Yeah.
And there was no, so, so it's not like they both had, uh, their bill went up significantly?
They're identically assessed, actually, they're the exact same, they're both eight acres.
Okay.
And so, yes, it happened to both, and both was the same process, where it defaulted to the minimum tax, and Morgan said, "No, it's not the minimum tax, it's time to assess that market value."
Right.
And, and so then their notices were changed.
So it's very frustrating in so many ways, what annoys me in that whole issue is how could that not have done that there was a change to the designation of the land?
The land designation never changed, it's always been industrial, it's still industrial, it's been assessed as farmland from the beginning of time.
So in other words, it was a benefit to them?
They've been paying minimum tax implications since the beginning of time.
Okay, so they have received an, a good time tax break for many, many years, is that what you're trying to tell me?
I would agree, but I also understand where they're coming from, the use hasn't changed, and their intent for the use hasn't changed.
Right.
So that's what's difficult, and when, you know, Doug made an interesting point that, and I, I sort of remember this, but not super clearly, he said how he wanted to rezone it to put houses there, and he was told, "No."
Yeah.
More, probably more correctly what he was told was, "You have to pay to do a subdivision out, or to do a rezoning, and you may not get it."
Yeah.
Right, the council of the day might look at that and say, "We don't have a lot of commercial industrial, and we don't support a change," so he had a risk there and chose not to take it. I would doubt that Marion told him that it was simply not gonna happen and he shouldn't do it.
Yeah, I can agree.
Because that's at the discretion of council, it's not at administration's discretion.
And I never remember Doug coming, telling that, not in my days anyways.
So the land adjacent to his.
Yep.
We, the town, put in some utilities.
So it's right on the property.
It's in between, right there.
It's right between the two.
And we did that because.
Natural way.
A piece of land, so.
There was another need, there was another need for it, yeah.
That's not the line of order, across the road to the, the western, that's where they're down, is it?
Yeah.
That's a problem, we don't know either way.
And so, the reason his land has gone up nine-hundred-and-sixty-six percent, his taxes, is because of that utility that's there now.
Correct, so when Morgan looks at properties, if it is immediately adjacent to all the services, he assesses it at market value, because it's immediately adjacent to water, sewer, power in this case, so the assessment went up.
And so his.
What's that?
Why didn't it go from the past, it was in there for a while.
Yeah, simply, it could've been done years ago, utility.
Okay, well, the assessment review doesn't come more than every five years for a piece of property, so, and it's only really happen if there is really a change in the use or a change with what's on that land, otherwise, there's no specific reason for an assessor to change an assessment, except that this year, we had an audit, and so therefore, the audit kinda pointed to that.
It wasn't directly tied to the audit, what probably triggered it was comparable sales.
Oh, yeah.
So that, you know, they point to Stewart purchase, they talk about these top land being sold, and all of a sudden, comparables were being sold.
Yes, now there was a sense of market value.
Say, well, I have to, Morgan has to stay between ninety-five and hundred-and-five percent of.
That's right.
Market value, so he's looking at that, saying, "Well, I have to do something," and council has discretion on how to tax it, but he had to do something, so.
Okay, so what is our discretion as council to do on this property?
In the MGA, if you.
So you can get an MGA.
I need to finish what I'm saying.
Sure.
So when, when we're, if in fact, we were to give them a tax break, like I know it was three options, if we were to give them some sort of tax break, would then Jack Malin come to us and say, "Hey, I heard that you gave."
We'd have to offer it to him.
You must do it.
So the MGA, the big, in, the big clause in the MGA is, "Where council deems it equitable to do so, you may."
Yeah.
So the question is, you must consider the neighboring property if you consider it equitable to do so.
And then Mike's add-on to that would be, and then we revisit this next year and the next year, and they, like, we just, because this, this property has been taxed according to this, so our, like, I just don't know how we can.
You can phase in a tax.
Yeah.
So then something you could look and say, "Okay, we're gonna phase in this tax." because it's, you know, the question, if Doug and I were sitting at my desk and talking, I'd say, "Doug, will you sell it to me for the assessment?" Chances are, probably, no. You probably wouldn't unload that eight-acre parcel for $59,000 or $70,000 worth of service land, which the town, the ratepayer, increased the value. He didn't ask for it, I totally agree.
No.
And he's just using it for pasture farming, totally agree. But where equitable to do so, you can cancel or reduce, refund, or defer.
And so, what we know at this point is the assessment is correct according to the rules that Morgan used to create assessment. So, more or less, he has to use comparables. He had comparables. If those comparables were too high at that time, quite possibly, they might have been inflated. But no matter what, those were comparables, and that's what he has to work with. That's what is required to work with. So, those are the things, and then Maxine property is sold also, and that was 20 acres or 25 acres. So, one, what we need to decide is, what do we do with the taxes, as Councillor Brown say? In my point of view, we have to kind of be careful the way we're going to look at it because it affects somebody else's property too, right? It's a...
Looking at $100 here per acre is what they're going to be paying. My route, I thought that.
Yeah, how it's roughly assessed, like I said, the first three acres are at market value, and then there's only a $1,000 assessed for the next five acres.
My suggestion would be to phase it in over three years.
It's again...
Yeah. Councillor Bangry?
That was totally what I was thinking along that line, council court, is to phase in it because to hit them right now, that was their big, that was their big concern.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, have they paid this money?
I believe so, yeah. I don't believe they're in arrears.
No, she said that they paid it off.
Yeah.
Councillor Selk?
If I have a piece of property in town, and I want to graze my donkeys there, or ever and ever amen, that doesn't mean I get to do that just because I have that, and that's been my use for 30 years or 100 years. You know, if a truck stop came in and said to Jack Malin, "I want to buy your land, I'm going to put a truck stop here," you think Jack's going to go, "Yeah, no."
Right, and now he has service land to sell.
Yeah.
That he didn't pay for the services.
No, the taxes. If we reduce the taxes.
The land is what it is.
Because it's a hay crop now, doesn't mean that we zoned it as a hay crop. We zoned it as light industrial.
Yeah. So, Councillor, if I hear you, the taxes are the taxes?
They are what they are because that's what the land is what it is.
I tend to agree with the phasing in of the taxes. They, they've paid it already, the whole thing?
Please, sir.
So, I guess we just say they've paid the taxes for the next three years?
Or we can credit it.
Or whatever. Or we can credit it to them.
The other option you do have, which is an interesting one, because we've had, in the last 60 days, I think, we've had this discussion about minimum tax implications, right? And are our minimum tax implications set high enough to incent development? And so, one of the options, although I'd have to work through the legalities of it, if you could defer the taxes and say, "Okay, it's going to continue to be taxed at a rate, but we're going to defer it until you sell it..."
Develop it.
"...or develop it, but then all those retroactive taxes are due."
Yeah.
So, if you want to graze it for the next 30 years, as soon as you subdivide it, or as soon as you get a development permit on it, that 30 years worth of taxes is due.
Yeah. And I would prefer that, honestly.
It could be. It could be the value of the land at that point in time. Right? That's tricky. That's risky for the landlord.
But it's also a way for him to avoid paying that, to still get revenues for his crop, and defer it, put that money aside, and use wisdom in the way he uses his...
There will come a time when he'll, they'll be selling that property.
Yes, of course I will.
And depending on where the inflationary factor takes place, he'll probably be able to afford to pay that back tax once he sells that. I mean, okay, eight acres. He sold eight acres up west of town for $112,000. I sold it. Eight acres, unserviced.
How much?
$112.
Unserved.
Now, they've got a serviced piece of property. You're saying that it was assessed at 70, yeah, which is, in my opinion, low. But down the road, you know, five years, six years, whatever, you sell eight acres of serviced land, you're looking at probably a couple hundred thousand dollars that it'll sell for. I know right now, I can sell farmland in that price range.
Yeah. It's gone quite up.
So, it's a possibility. And so, if the, you know, if the tax is deferred down the road when it's sold, then that tax is well within the range of payment. They can afford it, but...
Councillor Bangry?
What we suggest, phasing in this, somewhere in the past, we, the town has missed the boat on this, and how we should have been assessing and having them taxed. I mean, obviously, that line's been there for a while.
Yeah.
And we haven't taxed them property, and all of a sudden, we're going to drop a hammer on them. So, I think phasing it in would be a better idea for me.
Well, okay, I understand your reasoning, but then here's a flip of it. For all those years, they got a tax break and a very significant one. So, they got a very significant one.
That may be so, but they weren't aware of it. You can't say they got a break if they weren't aware of it.
Yeah, they didn't negotiate.
They didn't negotiate that.
And that is the problem with that whole situation.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Because I did not know.
To be fair, to be fair, until you're notified, that, that doesn't even come into the equation.
Yeah.
It just doesn't. So, you can't use that as a part of the argument.
Yeah.
We're talking about now. They still weren't aware.
There is wisdom in your argument.
I like the idea of the deferment, you know, that it's due when it's there. But I also need to make a motion for, for an extension.
What?
Let's go to extension until nine o'clock.
Okay. We have a motion, all in favor? Thank you. Councillor Drew, we haven't heard your opinion.
Well, I think the damage is done. They've paid their money, and it's been assessed at that value. We can send a letter saying that we're sorry that you feel badly about this, but I don't know that deferring, I just, I just can't see that. I mean, the value is there, we should be getting that money, and, I mean, I realize that these people have, are in shock, and they're a little upset about how this is going on. But I just don't know that we can do much about that.
Okay, the prime example, shocking on the county, they went and did the same thing. They went and taxed everybody in the hill, and I own a piece of property in the county. They, they socked it to me, and they had 200 county residents go in there and complained, and, and they, they made them back off because they went and charged that big, those big bucks at an assessed value. They didn't get consultation when they did it. Sheen's haven't got consultation from us. I don't think you can go there.
Okay.
Because you're going to have, you're going to have a backlash there.
All right.
You know, I don't think it's fair.
So, there is, there is here an interesting argument.
Oh, excuse me, just let me finish off what I'm going to say. As an op, as the decision by the county was, they backed off and they reimbursed.
Okay. I'm not worried about a county, to tell you the truth.
But I'm just saying, it's just example.
Yeah. No, I'm not worried about a county because it's not exactly similar. But what is, for me, an important aspect that they never knew.
That's right.
That is what annoys me in that whole story. So, is that now, although it is a righteous tax assessment, is correct, but they never knew.
And the key here is, they got their notice, they paid it. Then they got their second notice, cried a little, paid it. So, it's not like...
They're not trying to avoid paying their tax.
It's not like, at all. Like, that, that's the hiccup for me right there, is they, they got it, they paid for it, but then, "Oh, by the way, it's actually this much now." Like, there was no...
Not 50 bucks anymore, it's 150.
Yeah. But I, but I hear Councillor Selk, and Councillor Drew, and Councillor Bangry, and I'm a little bit of the same opinion too, that taxes are due. Now, we can still use your formula, give them three years or two years, maybe we could reduce that to two years, and say, "In two years' time, the taxes are fully paid." Or we have to say, that's the other argument, the taxes are due.
But if you do it deferred...
Do you have to do the same thing for Malin?
Yeah, and you're going to have like 17 other people come up and say, "Listen, I heard that so-and-so got deferred, so I want the same..."
Is there 17 other people?
No, I have no idea.
Yeah, I'd have to look at where it would apply.
I just pulled that out of the hat.
Yeah.
I wasn't...
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, as an example...
It's true.
Then you'll have, you could have some backlash the other way, of people saying, "Well, you know, now the town has done this for them, but you didn't offer that to me," and, I mean, there's lots of...
But how, but how many months ago did this council, when we had somebody that couldn't pay their land taxes, we gave them a break, gave them extra time to pay it, and that was money owed? So, now, we have somebody who has paid everything in full twice, right? Like, they've paid it twice, and we're going to, I mean, I realize you can say, "Well, if they can't afford it, sell the land, they're going to get it, it sounds like $100,000 for it. That's more than what's owed." But I think we have to be reasonable here. I think we have to see where they're coming from. It's not like it's our goal to give everybody a break, but I feel like maybe the phasing of the three years, or whatever this council sees fit, is more reasonable.
Okay, can I ask you then? The Malin property is going to need to receive the same treatment, except he was agreeable to pay his tax because he feel it's a fair assessment of his land.
Yeah.
So, how can one feel it's a fair assessment of his land on which it's okay to pay the tax and pay these taxes, and the other one feel it's not fair, not fair, the other one doesn't do any more on his land that this one does?
It's all financial ability. They don't, you got two different people here with two different incomes, and the ability to pay. I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, I think that the phasing in isn't fair.
I just want to complicate your discussion by throwing a couple other things out. You have some examples in the community of how, philosophically, actually, don't, I get it, but it's not convenient. But if you look at, let's take Atkins Development.
Yeah.
Let's take Shaw on Seventh. Let's take Josh Malin, phase two of the Ellison Development, we bought that. The council of the day, and this council, agreed that they would not charge them the increased residential tax until it went to a third party.
Correct.
Or it was subdivided. You're doing that in, I think, three or four different developments around town, where you said, "Okay, well, if you keep using it as you are, and it's just sitting there, and it's not sold to a third party, and it's just sitting empty, then we're going to continue basically to charge you the minimum tax implication." I think it's problematic, and we've had a bit of this discussion. Philosophically, I don't really, I'm not totally keen on it, but it's being done. So, where it's equitable to do so starts to play in because you're doing it over probably 100 other lots right now in town. Where you've said, "Until the use changes or subdivision, you can continue to pay that ag assessment essentially."
But haven't we charged them a reduced rate, making it as of R1? No, we haven't made it as R1, but we're charging them R1 rates.
On this one?
You're actually charging it, oh, so on this one, yeah. What they looked at was, when it was being assessed commercially and then paying on residential. According to Jill, her and Morgan talked and said, "Look, if we just, if we just assess it as residential, even though it is commercial, because it's empty and there's nothing on it, there's no improvements, then it will be, overall, the financial implication will be less." So, the other thing I wanted to throw out, and this would be what Shaw's on Seventh is, is we have utility through there that's created a benefit for them as a landowner. It's increased the value of that land. We could potentially, if they agreed, caveat the value of that improvement to the land that's due to the town upon sale. So, we say, "Look, we have $150,000 worth of improvements running adjacent to your property, and we want to recover that if you sell it because we put it in, and the taxpayer paid for it." So, we work out an agreement with the owner, and that's how Shaw's worked. It was just pasture there, when the road and the sidewalk and everything went in. And so, they have to pay us so much per front foot whenever they sell a lot, for the value of the infrastructure that existed. But until it sells, it's only taxed, it's essentially minimum tax implication until it sells. So, that's a couple different approaches. It ignores the fact that it is assessed at what it should be assessed at.
It is correctly assessed.
And it allows you to maybe recoup, if the issue is recouping the infrastructure costs, it accommodates that. Something to look at, to share some risk with them essentially.
But you're saying that it's been assessed at its value, but we're actually giving them a deal because we've, we've told them that we're charging them at a residential grade instead of...
Potentially, the impact, I was trying to mitigate the impact of the tax rate.
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, I understand a little bit of that. Here we have a solution. Phase it in for three years, and then recoup the full amount of the taxes afterwards. There you have one, is forget those taxes, keep them at $75, whatever it used to be.
The ag rate or whatever it is.
There is a solution. The tax has been established on properly assessed land and is due, as every citizen has to do. The other thing is...
I would suggest that, since we have a precedent set with deferment of these properties that you're talking about, we do the same thing with them. They pay it, and then all of a, if they sell, then they have to pay it all 15 years, whatever it might be.
Yes.
Just to be clear, you have no obligation to give them a response on what you're doing tonight either. The taxes are paid, they're not subject to any penalties.
Yeah.
And, and, but it would be reasonable, potentially, to say, "We want to explore the impact of a couple of options." Because we're, I'm frankly shooting from the hip a little bit here too, right? I can't tell you the exact financial implication of each of these options right now.
Okay. I think, I think there is a value in that. The taxes are paid, it's not as they are going to fret about having to pay that. So, why don't we...
But is there some specific ones we should explore?
Yeah.
The, like, the legal and financial implications of it.
Why don't we direct administration towards...
I just wondered if, I understand what you're saying, that they weren't, they didn't know about this, they paid their first one, then they got a bill for another one. Is there any way for us, and I realize that if, if they know that the taxes are going to be that high, it would have been nice for them to know so that they could have rented out the land or done something to make up that portion. And I wonder if...
Forget this year.
We can't, yeah, if we can just refund the money and say, "You know what, next year this starts."
That is where it is.
I mean, it's kind of a, in between the deferred three years and, I don't know, that's just...
All right. I think there is maybe a, a solution here. How would you feel if we refund them their money and then tell them, "Next year, the taxes would start"? Could you live with that? Councillor Brown?
Sure.
Because one way or the other, they still will have to pay it. And if they still don't have the ability to, to raise enough money from that crop, that is a business model that we'll have to deal with. We can't solve that issue.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. So, Councillor Barnes, how would you feel about that?
Well, I'm still leaning towards the previous use as ag land, and then now it's been changed,
and they've been using it, like, like you said, for fifty years. Now they're being forced into the town's way of doing things, and, and it's, it's not easy to, to see that jump, but...
But they could get one year break at least, and decide then what to do, right?
For that year, to get their money back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Benge, could you live with that solution? Refund them the excess, and because that didn't get sufficient notice, really, about the changes?
I think, I think that was their biggest concern, is why, why didn't they...
That annoys us all. Counselor Self, could you live with that?
Yeah. I think that Doug's biggest concern is, this is going to creep onto their other eighty acres that they have, so...
But it's not, it's not the point.
What? He's expressed that.
Yes.
I'm gonna be out of the farming business, reaching out to eighty acres.
Yeah.
So, this way we can notify them. Yeah, okay, you weren't notified.
Okay. So, I would, I would support that solution. So, I think, would somebody want to...
So, I make a motion.
Make a motion? Make a motion?
I got you. I would like to make a motion that we refund the Sheen Autumn family the full amount of their taxes, and...
Except, less than seventy-five dollar.
Uh-huh. And that we, that we notify them that as of next year, though, they will be paying what it was...
He says rate.
On a two thousand nineteen...
Thanks, guys, yeah.
On a two thousand nineteen...
Four hundred people helping me, I just feel the love.
Yeah.
So what we all said just now, thanks.
Is that working, Jeff? Can you maybe put it a proper spin there, and read it to us?
Yeah, read to me what I said, Jeff.
I'm trying to figure it out.
Let me also, for a second. Wordsmith that, Jeff, put some O's in it.
See if the reading's good, Jim. She and I may have different things to add, refund Sheen all the minimum tax, inform them that the total assessed amount and tax implication will be due in 2020 forward.
Exactly what I said.
So, so they will keep, we will keep the default at seventy-five dollar for this year.
All but the minimum tax.
Okay. So, I, I think, thank you, Counselor Drew, I think we came to a solution. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so text a little bit of doing, but you know, that little bit of doing tells me that maybe we need to have, possibly reviewing the way we do business with those type of thing, and have a proper policy in place, because maybe that's what's lacking, that's why it took us so much time. So maybe if administration could kind of look at that.
I think, I think one of the comments that kind of hurt my heart a little bit was the fact that they said that they called and they were told, too bad. And I don't know if that's how it actually happened, but, I mean...
Yes, it's a little bit of communication.
I guess maybe that might be their perception of how it was told, that they might have been told very nicely, but...
Yeah.
And I can have that discussion.
Yeah, I would hope that we would.
I, I assume the conversation went, look, we can't manipulate assessment.
Yeah.
We simply can't. But, and so Colin Morgan, he can't change the assessment. The council can look at the deferral or change of the tax. But I can discuss how that might have been...
Thank you so much. Okay, that was a tough one. Okay, the committee report, there is a few question I have.
Of course there is.
Counselor Brown, can you just help me, can you just help me understanding the wording in the minutes that says that defeated unanimously? What the heck does it?
No, it says, no, it says defeated by acclamation.
By acclamation, it's even worse.
At the end of the motion for the exercise.
Which one is this?
Says that they're defeated by, and I, it's just a misunderstanding of words.
That's exactly what it is, but she's fantastic, and she does a great job.
No, no, I, I love reading those reports, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
But there is something...
At two o'clock in the morning, you let that, by acclamation?
So was that your real question, that's it, right there?
No, there is another one, if I can find it. Do you know where that is? There was... It's, okay, Counselor, I remember.
Okay, go.
It has to do with the notion that a committee was going to be struck to allow the Ag Society to access eight thousand dollar a year, and I thought, oh my goodness, there's a misunderstanding as to the joint committee with, from the ICF. And it's really a total misunderstanding here, and somebody point me to it, guys.
Yeah, I know what you're talking, they're coming to us and asking for eight grand, and they're thinking they're doing it under the joint, you know, passing...
No, no, but you can't, that is not earmark for the Ag Society.
No, no, it was, so that was written wrong then, because as, as...
Yeah, can somebody fix it?
Yes, yes, I will have it fixed.
Can you ask, can you ask? You know, that, that can access those, that money, but not totally for the...
No, no, no.
But the way it's written, it's written that it's all for the U.S.
And they know it's not. They just knew that there could be money that's coming up between, a joint disagreement between the county and the town, and then...
They can access it, no doubt.
And they, like everybody else, that there would be two intakes, then they would have to apply for it.
They just need to, to realize it's not...
The wording, yeah.
Yeah, it's not eight thousand dollar for the Ag Society.
No, is that what it says?
It's what it says. I don't know where it is, but I remember reading it anyways.
Okay, I'll have her fix it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. All right, so that's fine.
Get on that.
Any, any, sorry, guys. Anything else that needs...
On committees?
Yeah, anything else?
I had, I had a handy bus committee report, but it didn't get any time, so we'll split them right.
Is a handy bus ever trying to figure out if there is a possibility to do other way to raise money than to just come to the town?
Yeah, they've done, well, the previous chair had some things that were going on, but Gary Moore is now back in that position, and we're going to be in December, first part of December, and talk about that.
It would be good, because honestly, it always goes up and up and up, and I don't know where we're going with it.
Up.
Pretty obvious, isn't it?
Always getting late, so...
You're really good. Thank you. So, strategic priority report, Counselor Benge referred to that. Yes, there is some money that is going to have to be reviewed.
The capital projects report.
Oh, sorry, I meant to go back and brand in that data, and then I didn't get a phone, but I didn't think about it, sorry. I'll give that to you the next one.
Sorry. Eight D's year report. Anything you want to ask Jeff, except you can't see the man, he's not busy.
Yeah, you got time to shave.
No, that's right, that's what I was trying to portray.
Jeff, thank you for your report, it's always good.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so correspondence, you can see our Bonham Municipal Affairs. MP Glenn Mertz respond to a town letter. By the way, I sent my congratulation to Glenn, but I think if the town could send a formal letter the same way as we did for Joseph Scott, to congratulate him.
Sure. Any resolution to that affect?
Counselor, Counselor Drew?
I'll make that resolution for administration to write.
A congratulation. Yeah, it was ten minutes after eight, it had been declared the winner. Ten C Farm Safety Center.
I just asked a question there.
Please go ahead.
Have you historically given them, how mu...
Two hundred.
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
Make a motion to give them the same amount of money.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you, Customs Support Services.
Cool.
Okay.
That's cool.
Good. All right. Now, eleven confidential items.
We have to go in closed session.
How are we going to do that? Why don't, why don't we...
You have to close this meeting before your organization.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, do you want to go into the confidential, or do you want us to go into the...
I'm a bit concerned about the timing tonight, because you have to have your organizational meeting.
So why don't we do that first?
Well, but it's a different meeting.
Oh, yeah, I know.
So you'd have to adjourn this one, so we'll be really quick, as quick as I can.
All right.
Although it's...
So if the meeting can stay at our position...
So we have the organizational meeting right after this closed session, but it's gonna have to be a pretty quick organizational meeting.
It's going to be quick.
Yeah, so if you give us ten minutes, if you wanna come back.
Yeah.
I think we can be pretty quick.
Okay, all right, can we adjourn to go?
We have a motion to go in closed session here.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.